Because you saw that it said start a broadcast, I was not even here.
Yeah, no doubt. All right, well, we'll try this. Is the recording, you think it is definitely recording that?
It's recording, yeah.
All right, well, I'll do a test here in a minute. Good morning and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is July 6, 2023, it's 9:30 a.m. We do have a new system here, a broadcast system that we're working with. If you are online watching, please self-mute yourself. Commissioner Kraus will be joining us via, on the webinar today. Commissioner Kraus, can you hear us?
I'm muted.
I can hear you.
All right.
All right.
Get a little echo here.
Get a little echo here.
From me?
You need to turn the volume.
Is that better?
Yes, I think so. Yes, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
We're still doing that. We're still doing that.
Is that any better?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Is there somebody else?
I can hear you.
Echoing.
It's echoing.
Echoing the people in the room.
Oh goodness, I'm sorry. Let me mute it now and see what I can do.
No, you're fine.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Everybody else needs a cell.
Everybody else needs a cell.
At home.
At home.
I think it's something.
I think it's something.
All right.
All right.
Better?
Better.
Is there any way we could turn the volume?
Is there any way we could turn the volume?
Is that good?
Is that good?
Now, can we hear?
Now, can we hear?
Everybody's all muted.
All right, I think we turned it back.
All right, I think we turned the voice.
Fine.
Fine.
We're hearing the echo.
We're hearing the echo.
Right in this room.
If somebody has their computer and their phone, if you have both going at the same time, it's going to create the echo, so you have to mute one of them.
All right, we're going to try this. All right. Well, welcome again. We're going to start off the meeting with a prayer by Pastor William Rowland. Sir, you want to, you want to stand or sit? You want to stand or sit? All right.
Peace be with you. But it's quiet. Our Father who art in heaven, all authority comes from you. Look with favor on our government leaders and bless this assembly this day to strive to govern us with order and that the people will desire to seek peaceful and quiet lives in this community. May we not have a limited perspective of you, but give notice that you are our Creator, trusting in you. Thank you for the blessings of our life, our health, our prosperity, our country, our families, our churches. But most of all, we give you thanks for your precious Son who gave His life for us to have eternal life. It's in His name that we pray. Amen.
If you could remain standing for the pledge, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of minutes, June 15, 2023. Any objections? Here none, they're approved as written. Special session, June 23, 2023. Any objections? Here none, they're approved as submitted. Approval counts payable for June 22, 2023, amount of $403,075.44 if there are no objections and it's approved. For accounts payable June 29, 2023, in amount of $546,338.77 if there are no objections and it's approved. Approval of manual checks for June 23, 2023, for the amount of $796,695.35 if there are no objections and it's approved. For approval accounts, a requisition, excuse me, for July 6, 2023, an amount of $82,074.24 if there are no objections and it's approved. Approval payroll for June 23, 23, for an amount of $299,799.90 if there are no objections and it's approved. For payroll for July 7, 2023, for amount of $302,551.58 if there are no objections and it's approved. Are there any announcements? All right. Public comment, we're going to move on to public comment. If you could, please come forward as your name's called. You'll have three minutes. If the bailiff has asked that you do take a seat, we're going to start at the top of the list. Start off with Jackie Miller.
Good morning. Harvest Hills was prescribed low-density parcel in the Vision 2035 comprehensive plan. Homes are there. In the current 2023 county zoning map that's available online, these residential lots are not identified as they were previously, but have been dubiously converted to a generic rural category with farms and livestock. However, commercial parcels are subdivided into six different categories: industrial, commercial, office, commercial, general, commercial, highway, commercial, neighborhood, commercial, and finally residential, white, industrial, commercial. That's pretty detailed. So what was the reason for this commission to removing large lot subdivisions and other identifying residential categories? Did that trick reclassify rural subdivisions residents as non-residents in zoning laws? I do hope that the new 2045 plan zoning map presents rural tax-paying residential landowners as residents and a little bit better than livestock. I am also informing you, this commission, that it should look into the charging of the BNO tax by utility businesses who use resident billing as a pass-through. My household in a rural residential subdivision was charged a BNO tax by Potomac Edison for one year. It took two months and a lot of help, which I am thankful for from the nice people of City Harpers Ferry and the Jefferson County Government to actually get reimbursed and the account corrected. What I discovered is that some non-municipal residents have been erroneously paying a municipal local surcharge tax or BNO tax, and some, I also learned that there are some municipal residents who aren't charged. So this really does need to be looked into. I also know that when I looked at the Public Service Commission annual report for Potomac Edison, there is absolutely no financial line item for this local surcharge tax. There's no way to check it, and that's why it took me two months to figure it out. So I think it's something you could have county residents that are being charged a municipal tax, and it should be looked into. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to Mr. David Tab.
David Tab, Jefferson County resident taxpayer. How's this multi-hundred-thousandth of dollars of system working out for you? Objected to it? Working great, huh? Somebody I would be ashamed of. Also, in the addenda pack, the $797,695.35 for manual checks was not posted. Should not have been approved. The bigger question is, whose pocket did it give in? So, I'm glad to see the county commissioners came to work for the first time in years after the Fourth of July. This is also wheat harvest time. It only takes a week or so. So be kind to the farm equipment and trucks that are on the road of the farmer's property they own the road. An agreement with the state lets the public access as long as the state is using the road for commerce. This was done back in the '30s. How do I know that? Because my grandfather helped put it together. So keep in mind that over 90% of the roads in Jefferson County belong to the landowners, not the highway department or the county. Need to start paying attention to this. As soon as I have a little bit extra time, I'm going to start challenging it. I'm going to put toll roads back up. Number five, Hilltop House. The amount of requests is conveniently left out. But Mr. Stahl, we're filling the blank within Development Authority, and you're part of that. Jefferson County ESA. No document attachments. Right on the form, it says if you have no documents, it can be denied. This is your request, not mine. The standby EMS standby Jefferson County Schools and the fair. No documents requested, no documents listed. Amending service is no longer free. That is what the voters wanted. They voted the people in to make sure that that happened. So now it's time to pay for what you use. You should also start paying the appointments of the committees that are currently volunteer. Some of these people do more work than county commissioners. Just saying. Number nine, Nathan Cochran, no supporting documents. The public has the right to know, especially D, matters dealing with county property. This is not county property, this is the taxpayers' property. Number 10.
One second, Mr. Tab.
Region nine, you just violated your own rules that the county commission adopt the, adopt the. Nine, so we think that's funny now. Great. There's a whole lot more stuff that needs to be going on here that's not. And being interrupted will be sad. I didn't hear any buzzer.
That's because she didn't send it, I have a stop.
Oh, that's because this couple hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment that's nothing but crap that the taxpayers are paying for, and you're supposing, it's your time, so y'all have a nice day because the county commission, you can't be safe in this county with this bunch. Y'all have a nice day.
Did you want to test anything over there, Shrad? Okay. All right.
Leave it open. Jennifer, can you hear me?
Mr. Kraus, can you?
Can you hear me?
Okay.
I think it's something with your.
I think it's something with your.
Are you, are you logged in?
Are you logged in on your phone and computer?
I just called in with my phone, I'm not logged in on my phone.
Okay, so on.
So on your.
Mute your audio.
Mute your audio.
We'll hear it through the phone. That should fix it.
All right, now we're going to try it again. It seems like it's working now. Okay?
Yeah.
Good deal. All right, we're going to start off with agenda item number one, Ms. Angie Banks.
Good morning. I have two exonuations. The first one is in our 2022 personal property book, Robinson. Taxpayer reported the wrong vehicle. They reported a 2010 Acura. Assess value 3,300, tax amount $95.14. Taxpayer is Harry H-U-A-N-G. Hang. Ticket number 314159.
Move to approve the ticket number 314159.
Okay.
Say aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries.
And they had a new bill made up on what they did have. Okay. This was in our 2023 personal property book, Cabletown District. The taxpayer was assessed for a 2015 Cadillac, but it should have been a 2017 Cadillac. Assess value $2,749. Tax amount $64.22. Applicant is Edward McHill. Ticket number 310147.
Move to approve ticket number 310147.
Okay.
In discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
And he got a corrective bill. So, and that is all of them.
Thank you.
Yeah. You'll be getting more, yes.
Just to ask Commissioner Kraus once more.
I didn't, I didn't hear her vote. I didn't hear Commissioner Kraus vote either. Just, can we, can we hear you? Can you hear us now, Commissioner Kraus?
Oh gosh.
Is she still on?
Well, yes, I can hear you.
Oh, good deal.
Oh, good deal. Okay.
Yeah, and I vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number two. Chef Hans.
I have a few items on the agenda. I'm going to ask you go to, on the last one, go to the executive session. First one is for approval of a new bailiff, part-time bailiff. Her name is Romelda Porter. She'll be starting on 17th of July at $17 an hour.
This is within your budget.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll move to approve her part-time bailiff, Romelda Porter, at $17 an hour. The start date is, say, the 17th of July. In discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
I believe you have in front of you.
I believe you have in front of you.
There's the MOU Cooperative Law Enforcement Agreement between Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and the USDA and the Forest Service and Harpers Ferry Job Corps. It's just a renewal of the contract that we've had for as long as I can remember. In fact, when I first started the sheriff's office in 1995, we used to do daily walkthroughs of the job corps. So it shows you how long ago it was, been in effect. I don't have, I believe you all have it somewhere.
Yes.
I'll move the approval of the 2023 Cooperative Law Enforcement Agreement between the Jefferson County Sheriff's Department, the USDA, US Forest Service, LEI, and Harpers Ferry Job Corps. And Constitution Center.
Second. In discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
The last one is reporting on the civil service error and the resulting personnel issues. I'm going to ask, we go to, we go to a executive session on this, please.
I'll move that we go into executive session to receive legal advice for the report, reporting of civil service error and.
Personnel issue.
Personnel issue, sorry. I was reading. In discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries.
Let me note for the record that I am potentially providing commission advice and I'm not providing the sheriff's advice of, there's a, there's a question on the ethics about this issue.
One up, gentlemen.
[inaudible]
Okay.
All right, welcome back. I move that we come out executive session.
Second.
Yes, sir. I'm asking a motion to because of administrative error to backdate salaries of my new lieutenant and my new sergeant to dates that I will determine and add back. I don't have exact dates. One is going to be about two months from now, about eight, probably 12 weeks, and the other one is probably going to be somewhere around six to eight weeks.
And what who is lieutenant?
I don't have exact dates. One is going to be about two months from now, about eight, probably 12 weeks. And the other one is probably going to be somewhere around six to eight weeks.
And what who is lieutenant?
Lieutenant will be Lieutenant Ben Williams. And the sergeant is going to be Sergeant Douglas Fletcher.
Just those two.
And also that I'm establishing a non civil service rank of designation, not a rank, but a designation by code. There are only four ranks as deputy sheriffs, as I said, stated corporal sergeant, lieutenant and captain, but I'm making creating a designation of first sergeant. And that'll be for First Sergeant Fletcher, Ronald Fletcher. And he'll get a small $1,500 stipend for becoming my top sergeant.
All right, I'll move to approve the retro pays, the retro pay due to the administrative error to Lieutenant Williams and Sergeant Fletcher for a date to be determined by our sheriff.
And Sergeant and Sergeant Fletcher out to the date from the administrative error for the other rank.
And also for the administrative error for the other rank for Sergeant.
Ronald Fletcher. To Freddie Nated Fred Sargent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Jennifer, we're still getting feedback from either side.
I don't have any idea what I'm doing wrong. I have the computer muted and it's just my phone.
If you have a phone, just if you just want to mute it, that'd be fine. Thank you. All right, thank you, commissioners, have a great day. Earlier, we had someone on line, as you all know, we have a new system and we're, we're having some difficulties that we can't quite figure out. We had someone try to comment during the public comment period online, they couldn't get on, they actually drove here to comment. So I want to go back to public comment and give them three minutes, there was somebody in the room. Yes, ma'am, if you want to come up and state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Bladen. And I am a resident of Harvest Hills. And I just want to make a brief comment. I plan to write a letter and maybe comment more formally and in depth. But I just want to say that me and also many of the other neighbors in Harvest Hills are strongly opposed to the agenda item number four and the proposal to consider rezoning the Harvest Hill neighborhood. And we are opposed to this because we all recently purchased into that neighborhood because it was zoned rural and the neighborhood was supposed to have a certain number of space between lots and a certain type of character. And that's what we were sold on. That's what we were told that was the plan and would not change anytime in the near future. But now pretty much less than a year or about a year after we have now purchased our homes. Now they are planning to increase the density of that neighborhood by about 150%. Change the layout of the roads. Many of us changing like what would be behind our lots. And reasons we're concerned about this, number one, there's already an issue with school crowding at TA Lowry Endreswood. When I initially tried to register my son, I was told he'd have to be driven 30 minutes to Blue Ridge. I also have had trouble getting my son into the programs at San Michael. They all filled up within days after them opening. We also unable to find any kind of childcare for our one year olds. So I currently drive my daughter 20 minutes to Berkeley County to find a spot for her. There's a waitlist of 10 to 12. And there's also no easy access to Harvest Hills, to Route nine, without going all the way to the circle. So a lot of people cut through Briar Run currently. Or you have to go down Luther Jones Road, which does not even have a line down the middle of it or squirrel right by the school through Shenandoah Junction and all the high school traffic. So I just want, you know, when you consider adding more density to this area, I want you to consider the impact on the community. And while I am totally in favor of growth for Jefferson County, I also think it needs to be smart growth and measured growth. And just to note that already in that area, there's a kind of more demand for things like childcare and schooling that are available. There's a 10 to 12 waitlist for infant or one year old care right now, pretty much at every daycare in Charleston in the Jefferson County area. That's why I'm going so far. So I do plan to submit more in-depth comments. But just for this initial part, I wanted to bring those considerations to the commission about rezoning this and adding another very high density community to the county and particularly to this side of the county in this area, which is currently zoned as rural. That's all, thank you.
I'm going to move on to agenda item number three, Jefferson County Probate Office. Nikki's presenting for this.
Mr. President, I need to recuse myself. I have a family member that's with in the probate.
Understood, thank you.
All right, good morning, I have my probate hat on this morning. I couldn't be here this morning.
First, you have to convene as a I move that we convene as a fiduciary board.
Second, any discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
The first set that you have. We did have a few changes to the list, we had to update the list. So the first list you have is the probate estates that have met all their requirements and are ready to be closed for the third quarter.
I move to accept the list as presented. And you want all this.
So there you have two sets of lists. The first list is the estates that are closing. The second list are all the estates that have been opened since the last quarter. So you can either do them in the same motion or.
Okay, I'm moving to close third quarter probate estates that have been open since April 1st, April 6, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion carries three zero.
That are the estates that have been opened.
That have been open since, I guess, that 73. All right.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Case three zero.
That's your copy.
There you go, sir, thank you.
That we reconvene as a county commission.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She carries, thank you. All right, agenda item number four, Brooke Perry, West Virginia Planning Manager for Greenway Engineering.
Hi, I'm here virtually.
Oh, welcome.
Hi, how are you guys doing?
Very good. Well, the floor is yours, ma'am.
I'm just calling today to request that the public hearing be scheduled for the Harvest Hills rezoning of phase two of the subdivision.
Okay. Do we have, is Jenny online? Jenny Brockman? Typically, we go to the typically we go.
Jenny, I am here, sorry.
Jenny, what would be your recommendation for scheduling this? We can get on the planning commission agenda and then come back before the county commission.
Because we have the July 25th meeting scheduled for the planning commission, we can have this on that agenda. And you, I think, have a two week, I think you have to note, I think the county commission is required to put it in the paper twice. So we can have, if we have it on this July 25th for planning commission, I don't think you could have it on, well, I don't know, August 3rd, I don't know whether the planning commission recommendation has to be done yet or not. Or whether you would wait till August 17th.
Okay, it looks like the safest bet is probably August 17th.
Yeah.
That'll be, that'll be evening meeting would be great, too.
Okay.
All right. So we just, we just approved the meeting for the 17th, correct? And then do we, you'll, you'll put the meeting and put it on the planning commission meeting for the 25th?
Yeah, I think you need to make a motion to set a public hearing and send it to the planning commission for their recommendation as to whether it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
All right, I'll, I'll move that we hold the public hearing on August 17th, 2023. And that we ask, we'll send a letter to the planning commission asking for their recommendations for whether this is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
On July 25th?
On July 25th, yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, I, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. All right, and Jenny, I'm number five, Laurel. And she brought her team with her, y'all, y'all, come on up. This is the Swan Hilltop House Hotel LLC.
Want another chair up front? Morning. I'm the project manager of the Hilltop House Hotel, Laurel Zemansky. And I'm here with my team, John Stumpf from Steptoe and Johnson and Brett Stewart, who is our development partner. And we are here to introduce our second tax incentive financing program. And that is property incremental property tax. And I'll let John go ahead and, and give you his brief.
Good afternoon or morning, excuse me. The resolution you have before you today would establish a public hearing on August the 17th on the potential creation of a tax incentive financing district which would be comprised solely of the Hilltop House properties. You may recall, last year, we went through the process of creating the Economic Opportunity Development District, which is a sales tax TIF. Creates a basically redirect sales tax that's generated from within the Hilltop House to costs associated with the development. That, that EODD, Economic Opportunity Development District, was approved by the legislature during this past legislative session. And the West Virginia Development Office sent a letter to the county commission in June notifying the county commission that the, that the sales tax TIF, the EODD, had been approved by the development office. It did have a contingency in it that the, that there was also a real property TIF created along with the sales tax TIF. We had discussed the real property TIF back last year. Simply hadn't proceeded with it because we wanted to make sure the EODD got through the legislature. So we're here today to start the process on the real property TIF. Let me give a brief overview of the process here. This is the first of several steps for the county commission. Again, today, the resolution simply schedules a public hearing. We chose August 17th, we can set it for whatever date you all prefer. There is an application that is on file with the county commission that details the creation of the district. That application will be provided to the Board of Education pending provided that the county commission approves scheduling a public hearing. We will provide that application to the Board of Education, to the state. So they'll have an opportunity to review it. Public hearing occurs and all that does is submits the application to the West Virginia Development Office. Now Department of Economic Development, used to be Development Office. They have 60 days to approve or deny the application. And then following there, we assume they approve it, which we've had some preliminary conversations with them. We would come back to the county commission for an order actually creating the TIF district. So this is the first of three steps. This doesn't obligate the county commission to approve the TIF district. It simply starts the process and schedules a public hearing.
So basically, the day's business, all we have to do is, is schedule a public hearing for the 17th. Okay.
Correct.
So I have the motion correct, it's for the EODD?
This is for the real property TIF.
The real property, so sorry, so sorry, okay.
And what we would propose to do is whatever date of the public hearing, we would bring the final order creating the EODD to the county commission at the same time.
Okay. All right, I'll move to prove that we have a public hearing for the property TIF for August 17th evening meeting next month.
Second, I have, I had a question.
Oh, sorry, sure.
Commissioner Kraus, I don't believe, I believe this process started well before she took office. So I don't know if having that public hearing on the 17th is adequate time for her to get up to speed on what has been presented so far so that she can make decision on that. So I guess I'm deferring to Ms. Kraus to tell us if the 17th of August for a public hearing is sufficient time for you to get up to speed.
Wait, I think I'm, I'm talking to her, I think I lost. Can we call her back?
Sure.
I just.
Sorry.
I'm just.
We did, we started, we, we had the initial conversations on the real property tip last fall, absolutely. And I'd be.
Make sure she's got a full picture of what is being asked.
Sure, and I'd be happy, along with Nathan, to have a call, a video conference with any member of the county commission. Obviously, we can't have everybody together because of meetings, but I'd be absolutely happy to have that conversation to go over the process and the application.
Sorry about that.
So the question, Jennifer, is is August 17th good with you? And, and is that sufficient time for you to get up to speed on what's going on with this project?
And you just missed it, the folks that are presenting this for the Hilltop House said they, she would, they would be happy to jump on a Zoom caller to, to get you up to speed because a lot of this stuff that we were discussing today took place prior to you taking office.
I think that would be a good, a good idea. I definitely need some more information.
Okay.
And I believe August 17th, that does give me enough time. Thank you.
All right, good deal, all right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor to have the public hearing on the 17th for the property TIF in a second, I believe. Second, any more discussion?
I'm just, at the public hearing, will you be making a presentation? Open it up for public comment, is that, I, I don't know what you're planning to do or just.
You can do that. Typically, we wouldn't make a presentation, but that's only, there's no rule, rule to that. But we.
I think everyone needs to understand what it is.
So, okay, yeah, and that's absolutely fine.
I have a very basic, I wouldn't trust myself to explain to a lot of people. So I would, I would appreciate that if others are in.
Happy to, that's no problem.
So are we, so I'm just going to make this note, too, because we're going to do the other public hearing on the 17th as well. We need during our regular meeting, okay.
Back in lunch, or dinner.
Dinner, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion carries four zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to agenda item number six, Jennifer Myers. How are you?
I have, I brought some people with me as well. Um, Daddy, who works for us with our mobile rec program. And we also have Pam and Morgan here are from West Virginia Promise as well, to give you a little information about what we're here today to share. So starting, and then if you guys want to talk about it. Thank you for your time today and for allowing us to come in. Um, we are very excited to share with the commission that we received the 2023 Red Wagon Award from West Virginia Promise. We had staff attend the Governor's Service Award banquet, I guess, a couple of weeks ago to receive the award in Charleston. And it's a huge honor for us to receive this. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about our mobile rec program and then we have a video as well that we can share with you. And then I will turn it over to Pam and Morgan to talk a little bit about the award and any other information they would like to share. So for those that don't, don't know, our mobile rec program started, it's been close to five years ago at this point. But we purchased a, a van that we, we have all decked out. It's called Let's Play Mobile Recreation. And we take the van all over the county. So, you know, the goal of mobile rec is to bring recreational programs and activities to areas of the county that may not have the opportunity to either participate in programming that we offer at the rec center. Or maybe they don't have the ability to get to a park that's near them. So we, we go to them and do free activities. We have all kinds of things, we have many golf. We have all kinds of things. We have mini golf, we have skee ball, we have, you know, connect, these huge Connect Four games. I'm missing a lot of stuff because Gabby does all of that and takes it out. I'm sorry.
Archery.
Archery, which is, which is really popular. But we throw it all in the van and we go all over the county and take these things and set up. So in the past year, we have had over 133 visits to areas of the county and have interacted with over 7,000 kids in the community that, again, may or may not be able to participate in programs that we offer at Parks and Rec. We have been to the schools, we do library pop-ups, a lot of community events. This year, for West Virginia Day, Jefferson County Parks and Recreation was the provider for all the children's activities at West Virginia Fest in Charlestown. So we have that partnership with them that we were able to do that. You know, car shows, blooms and blossoms, we've done things with Rancin' Community Gardens. We work with the AAACP to do the back-to-school event that they do, the big block party they have. We've also recently started working with the Mission, not Mission Community Center, and taking the Mobile Rec van up there, doing programs with them. Also, areas of the county, we have a kind of a standing date with Apple Tree Gardens. We go there once a week. Now, they would, I think, love to have us more. But we are to the point, we actually can't get to everyone that's requesting the use. Gabby, you know, when it started out as kind of a seasonal position, has really become something that should be more of a full-time position with managing all of the dates that we have come to. And then, of course, we go to the county fair. So we set up there and we have programs, again, for free for kids to come up and try out, try out activities that we do. So we're about halfway through the summer. We still have 50 events coming up that we need to finish out here before the end of, the end of fall. So it's a, it's a great program. It's a very busy program. And we're, we're happy to get out to the community and like, we'll be, you know, and I think the community likes what we can do and what we can show them, and they enjoy that, that interaction. Gabby, would you have anything to add?
I think you pretty much covered it.
And I just, you know, I want to kind of give a shout out to Gabby. Gabby has done a fantastic job, again, getting the program out. We received a grant last year from Unicare, which we were able to buy additional supplies. And the program has grown so much over the past year that we just bought a, a trailer, because we need more space to try to get things to new locations. So our goal, our goal this year is to hopefully buy an additional van and have, have kind of two drivers and two groups that can get out, get out to more places. Like I said, it's truly looking at the schedule that she manages. It's, it's pretty daunting. So she's done a fantastic job getting, getting to everywhere and trying to, trying to bring this to as many people as we possibly can. And I will let Pam and Morgan, do you want to talk a little bit about the award?
You'll need to shut there while we talk here.
You can come up.
I'm Pam Blott, and I'm the Director of West Virginia Promise.
I'm Morgan Weister. I'm the Outreach Director.
So I just want to say and start off first by thanking the County Commission, because years ago, I was an AmeriCorps myself, and the County Commission supported the program so I could serve here at Jefferson County. And since then, it has helped me to become the Director of the same program that I serve at. I've been doing this for 17 years, and all those 17 years, we have given out a Red Wagon Award once a year as part of the Governor's Service Awards. And we have a nomination where people have to fill it out and nominate who they would like. And I don't remember how many we had this year. We had quite a few. And so we reviewed them, and Jefferson County Parks and Rec is the one that is, was totally up there to, to get the award. So just to tell you a little bit about West Virginia Promise, our program focuses with children and youth, like any program in the state that serves kids. We are there to partner with if they would like. Our program focuses on, there's five resources that we try to promote, and they're called the five promises. It's caring adult, a safe place, a healthy start, and effective education, and opportunities to give back. So in short, it's meant to protect, nurture, teach, serve. So there's, it's proven that if children receive four out of five of those promises, they grow up as more productive citizens, they are successful in school, they won't drop out. So there's just, there's a lot of documentation proven through the years that those five promises are needed for the children. So our entire program focuses on, anything that we do is about the five promises. So one of the big things our program does is we have AmeriCorps members as well. So I'm a sponsor of AmeriCorps Grant. And right now, we currently have about 27 year-long AmeriCorps Vistas serving all over the state of West Virginia and Ohio. And we're hoping to possibly move into Maryland, so and open, you know, it up to some more programs. And we also have what's called Summer Associates, and those members serve in summer programs eight, nine, or 10 weeks. And before COVID, we were placing anywhere from 85 to 105 members. Since COVID, our numbers are down to 48, because we have programs that still aren't open, because they have to have people hired to run the program. And then these members come in and be the, like, the teachers, the tutors, you know, they run, kind of like an Energy Express program in the summer. So they're, they're, they're having trouble finding people to work. So, so just to give you a little bit of data, because that's really important for our grant, is to keep track of what our Vista members are doing. And so we served 43,000 kids in 2022 with the five promises. We have, we, our Vista members recruit volunteers and manage the volunteers. So 3,126 volunteers were recruited by those members, managed, and those volunteers served 19,362 hours, which is awesome for programs that are serving kids. So our members also can write grants, go out and get sponsorships, just do all kinds of marketing to bring in more partnerships. They can ask for in-kind donations, things that their programs need. It could be food. We have programs that do gardening projects, teach kids how to garden, how to preserve the food, how to cook the food, some of our programs. I can't think right now. I'm trying to think, what do they do? Morgan, can you think of anything else? They just, they just do all kinds of things for kids. So they, the, the cash resources that's been developed through our members in 2022 has been $5,240,000. And that's through grants or sponsorships, and that's cash. It's like funding for those programs. And then in-kind has been $1,024,000, which is, it could be tables that the program needs, or books, or food, or backpacks, or coats, or shoes, or whatever the program focuses on for those children. That's what the in-kind donations are usually about. Do you have any questions?
Take a short, short video and then. Tony would like a picture of the award.
Myers, Director of Jefferson County Parks and Recreation here in the Eastern Kentucky Hagerwell District. We were introduced to, I believe, a new AmeriCorps program. I attended a, I believe it was a chamber event, many, many years ago. And they talked about this, and we've had, you know, people raised our attention before. So we had reached out and we've met with, with Pam a couple of different times. And we started using this as for summer programs, and actually for our Mobile Recreation Program. Morgan was one of the first businesses that we had, and actually helped to get the Mobile Rec program off the ground all those years ago. And it's, it's a great opportunity to partner with them, because we do the same thing. You know, I mean, the promises of protect, mentor, nurture, teach, and serve are a part of what we do every day. And I think it's a perfect opportunity to, you know, partner and work together with the Vista program. And we're just, we're so delighted to be, you know, considered for the award and to win it is just a huge honor to us, because we believe in what we do, as we know that, that they do as well.
My name is Becky Ziegler. I work for Jefferson County Parks and Recreation. My position is Special Projects Coordinator. In the simplest terms, Mobile Rec is equal access to play, recreation, and learning opportunities. It's a mobile unit that goes all around the county and gives kids an opportunity to access recreation in ways that they wouldn't otherwise be able to access without transportation. Jefferson County Parks and Recreation serves approximately 8,000 to 9,000 kids each year through our programming. If we are doing it right, those numbers don't always crisscross each other, because the whole point of Mobile Recreation is to reach kids that aren't able to get to the park for whatever reason may be affecting them. The Mobile Recreation van is unique, because we installed solar panels a few years ago, which gives us more access to go to more places regardless of electrical needs, and it allows us to take more activities to more places. And that creates a comfortable opportunity for kids to interact in a safe place. At the heart, Mobile Rec is partnership. We could not do this program without partnership. We could not do this program without support. And so the future of Mobile Rec is bright in that we really think that there's an opportunity to grow the program. And so we expect our program to go, and we expect our partnerships to continue to develop and grow as well. It's, Mobile Rec is an exciting opportunity for businesses to plug in. It's an exciting opportunity for other organizations to plug into what we're doing. All it does really is help organizations and businesses plug into the community. And we just want our community to keep growing in a positive, strong way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want a picture? All right.
You should really do it with that seal behind it. Yes. It's just a cute wagon.
It is a cute wagon, yeah.
We call it play.
There was actually one in the hallway at the courthouse when we first started this.
All the powers of America's promise.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I know it's not on the agenda, but fireworks went okay?
I was gonna mention that, but I wasn't on the agenda. Yes. Fabulously. So thank you, guys, for your support. We really appreciate it. We had a quick little video put together for that to share it. We shared out with the Commission, and it went, went really well. The Sheriff's Department was phenomenal, and traffic control, seven emergency services there, and local fire departments, everybody really worked together. It was a true community act.
And I like seeing in the paper, too, the traffic control before you get there.
Thank you, Ian, for that map.
They did a phenomenal job.
They had everybody on post in an hour.
Yeah, that's good.
We appreciate everything y'all do. I know a lot of people were very excited that fireworks came back. So thank you all for doing that, taking initiative and doing that. Thank you, thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move on to item number seven, Luke Siegfried, right, County Commissioner.
Well, I don't quite know how to follow that, but I'll do my best.
I mean, you don't have fireworks.
I do not.
Are you going to red wag?
I have a very pretty flyer.
Okay.
What I have, hopefully, this is not the first time you guys have seen this. This is another way that we're trying to get the word out. This serves as an announcement for the Goals and Objectives Public Survey. It has been online since June 21st, and will be open until July 21st. We first have flyers as many places. I can go to the list where they've been posted. The easiest way people can access it is online. It is on the County Commission website, as well as the County Commission Facebook page. You can also find it in our five libraries throughout the county. And they are also placed in the, you know, the municipality town halls. There's also one right over there. It's a little bit harder to see, but we're doing our best to make it as accessible as possible. We also did a press release out to seven different news organizations and did an email blast, everyone who signed up for the email alerts through the county system. So this is really just a, please, everyone, spread as much as possible. You guys are in touch with different organizations that we are not. We're happy to print off more copies of them. It is primarily an online survey, accessed by this QR code. And the link attached is in your agenda packet, as well as, as I mentioned, accessible on the, I believe it's the headlines of the County Commission webpage. Anyone can access it right off of the front page of the County Commission website. If you do not have access or have any trouble using it online, we also have print copies that are available. They've got this nice little depiction out the front here and a description. This is a print copy with the exact same questions, formatted slightly different, because it's print versus, you know, just online. You can pick up a copy at any of the five libraries, as well as in the Office of Planning and Zoning. That's actually all I have. Just want to make sure everyone's spreading the word. We've already had a pretty strong response rate that we're very happy with. We're getting very close to breaking 600 responses, which is far and above what was done for the Envision Jefferson 2035 Plan. But we're trying to get that as high as possible and get as many people to respond as we can inside the community.
So how do we know, and maybe there's no way to know, I don't know, with a survey, that we're getting Jefferson County residents?
So we phrase it around, do you live, work, or play inside Jefferson County? We are expecting to mostly get responses of residents, people who both work and, you know, live here, and some people such as myself who just work here. We do have a specific demographic question, asking for the, just the zip code of the residence. And that's not a perfect tool, but it's a really good way to go. This is the responses about where we're getting, because there's probably gonna be a handful from, say, Loudoun County, Berkeley County and such. And do our best to, like, localize certain responses to different parts of the county in a zip code sense, which is a tricky tool to use, but it's better than some of the other options.
Yeah, I'd forgotten about that. I filled it out. Can I do it again?
That is a good thing to note. If it is device locked, just so we don't have any data distortion, if it's filled out once on a device, laptop, mobile device, what have you, it should not be able to be filled out on the same device again. I understand this has cost some limitations. It's something we're probably gonna be revisiting when we do the other survey, but we're not at that point yet. We still have tons of print copies. I'm happy to print out as many more as possible. They're accessible from the library, so on and so forth. And if you have other organizations, we can make those accessible as possible.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? I don't, I don't have any.
Much for your time. Please spread the word.
We're gonna move on to item number eight, Director of Jefferson County ESA.
Good morning. Several items, mostly personnel. As I told you in the past, we had several employees who were attending Blue Ridge Community College taking what will, in the end, be the paramedic program. It's a two-step. First half is the EMT advanced, which five have accomplished, got their certification. And they're currently enrolled in the second half, which will get their paramedic. So we have promotions. I guess you consider those promotions. They, they move up to a new position, and they will fill, as an ALS provider, they will fill the, some of the vacancies we have in the budgeted paramedic positions that we have. So I assume we need to do each one individually, correct? All right. The first one would be Bryce Billings. He was a technician, which is EMT, who's certified to operate pumper, fire truck, ladder truck, specialty piece. So several of these guys are in the same position. So he goes from technician to technician ALS. He is, he received his certification on 6/11, so I'm asking for retroactive approval for his rate at 22, 24 an hour for that. A great adjustment for his position, and then he'll be, receive the 7.1, 5% adjustment, which will make his final new pay rate 23, 35 per hour.
So I just want to mention, I think, consistent with this, usually we do retroactive based on administrative area.
I'm not sure, yeah. This is all new. I'm not sure how.
Right, no. I mean, I did notice some, and all of them has some. I mean, I did notice some and all of them has some flatter.
Because they.
The certification.
Yeah, they, we don't know exactly when they're going to receive the certification. So generally they get it at the beginning of this pay period. We've, through this whole thing, we've, we're kind of behind a little bit on some things. It depends up to you guys.
Suggesting that I don't mind retroacting this to the current pay period, which was Sunday, the second, but not going back beyond unless it was administrative error on payroll's part. That's what we've been doing with the sheriff's office and the other retro pays. If it was administrative, I believe we don't typically retro or we're not supposed to retro pay.
Is that correct? Okay.
The audit grounds upon retro.
Right, okay. Unless it's administrative error.
Right.
It's not retro pay though.
So I'm, yeah, I'm just suggesting as big as.
Sure.
The effective seven.
Yeah, so we'll just have to, so we can strike out most of this then.
I would just say that it's not retro pay if they're entitled to it. When they're entitled to it, then they should be paid from that point on. Is how I would get it. Otherwise, it's a Wage Payment Collection Act issue. They, they should be paid from the time that they're entitled to be paid. I don't know if that's any different in this case. I'm sorry, I was.
Okay. So you're saying, so you're saying if they're entitled to it, the day they get their certificate, it was when they, it's when we should back up the date.
That is policy. That's another thing that. Or the next. Federal, you can, you can. Pay period.
The next pay period. Yeah, I mean, I would say the next pay period following their being entitled in that period, they should get paid from there.
That would fall under like the federal labor standards act. So I mean, we may not, I'd have to look at the internal policy, but you know, when we, when we have a lack thereof, we can follow the federal guideline.
Right.
I would hope that this not happens again, but if you all are, you know, trying to get payroll transition holidays and certifications falling in, this kind of.
It wasn't that they weren't paid. All their certifications are all over. To me, it's administrative error is pretty cut. I'm just proposing that we make all of them consistent with seven-two.
Perhaps not use the word retroactively in the motion.
Yeah, however you want to make them.
It must be effective.
Effective seven-two.
Yeah, so their final rates, seven-two would be what's under the funding request, twenty-three, thirty-five for Mr. Billings. Twenty-three, thirty-five per hour. That includes the FY twenty-four increase.
Okay. All right, I mean, make sure I get this right. I'll prove, I'll prove Bryce Billings moving from tech to tech A to.
ALS.
ALS, sorry. And this would at an hourly rate of twenty-three, thirty-five or.
Seven-two.
Starting at seven-two, twenty-three.
Effective seven-two.
Effective seven-two, twenty-three.
Second, twenty, twenty-three. It's on the paper.
Yeah. Seven-two is being a paper for this paper.
Okay.
We want to make sure we make it effective when he gets his certificate.
We're on a different pay week than you guys still, so.
Are you? I'm sorry.
We haven't transitioned to pay week yet. See, that's what I'm saying. There's so much stuff going on with the payroll currently.
Would you mind if I tried that?
You go ahead.
You all correct me if I don't.
Okay.
I move that Bruce Bryce Billings be promoted from technician to technician ALS. And this will transfer him from full-time EMT position to the vacant full-time paramedic position. This will be effective on six eleven, twenty twenty-three at a rate of twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents per hour. And then on seven-one, we have the new pay rate of twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents an hour. Get that right, Mike?
That covers it. Yeah, I'll second that then. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion case three-one. All right, go ahead, Mike.
All right, the next on my list is Donald Dunn Jr.
May I introduce this one?
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
It's very, very difficult to figure. I know I'm on speed, but it's very difficult for you, Shane and Mason and MK because they're not, of course, quite here.
Oh, this is the phone.
I'm really soft spoken. Can you hear me better now?
I can.
Okay, I'll speak up.
Thank you so much.
All right, same thing here. Donald Dunn Jr. Was a technician, received his A certification, so he's moving to technician ALS. He has many more years of service with us, so he's at a higher rate. He, his base rate, new base rate would have been thirty-oh-one and then with the seven-one increase, he goes to thirty-one, fifty-one per hour.
I'll make the motion, I'll move that Donald Dunn Jr. Be promoted from technician to technician ALS, transferring from current full-time firefighter EMT position to a vacant full-time firefighter paramedic position. It's effective on six eleven, twenty twenty-three at a rate of thirty dollars and one cent per hour. And then with the fiscal year twenty-four salary increases on seven-one, twenty twenty-three, his new pay will be thirty-one dollars and fifty-one cents per hour.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Did she vote?
Did you vote? Jennifer, did you vote?
I'm sorry, I'm having some technical problems. Aye, thank you.
All right, okay. Motion case three-one. Okay, all right.
All right, I have Mr. Heath Fleming, also was a technician, moved to technician ALS through certification. His rate, new base rate would have been twenty-two, sixty-six and at seven-one within FY twenty-four, he goes to twenty-three, seventy-nine per hour. He also moves from the EMT position to one of the vacant paramedic positions.
I'll try to speak louder so Jennifer can hear us. I move that Heath Fleming be promoted from technician to technician ALS. And this will transfer him from a full-time EMT position to the vacant full-time paramedic position, effective on six twenty-five, twenty twenty-three. Rate of pay would be twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents per hour. Fiscal year salary increase, his new pay on July one will be twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents per hour.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Motion case three-one.
All right, I have one more technician, Matthew Minnick, from technician to technician ALS. His base rate twenty-three oh-nine, after fiscal year twenty-four increase, he moves to twenty-four, twenty-four per hour, also moving to one of the vacant paramedic positions.
I'll move that Matthew Minnick be promoted from technician to technician ALS. We'll transfer him from a current full-time EMT position to a vacant full-time paramedic position, effective six eleven of twenty twenty-three at a rate of twenty-three dollars and nine cents per hour. And then with our fiscal year salary increase, his new pay rate as of July one will be twenty-four dollars and twenty-four cents per hour.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Motion case three-one.
Right, Matthew Locke, he was a firefighter EMT level one. Received his A certification, so he moves to firefighter A EMT level one, base rate twenty, twenty-seven with the FY twenty-four, he moves to twenty-one, twenty-eight per hour, also moving to the vacant, on the vacant full-time positions for paramedic.
I'll move that Matt Locke be promoted from firefighter EMT one to firefighter A EMT one. That's fulfilling a vacant full-time paramedic position. The pay effective six twenty-five, twenty-three of twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents per hour. Fiscal year twenty-four salary increase effective six twenty-three. New pay rate is twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents per hour.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Motion case three-one.
All right, I have Todd Turner. He initially is part-time firefighter EMT level two. He received a new certification, it moves him up to firefighter EMT level three. After that, his base rate would be nineteen sixty-eight per hour. He is going to, I don't know if we should do this, it has to be in two motions. He has that promotion and he has, he moves to part-time to full-time. So should we do it all in one?
We can do it.
Okay.
We're going to read what's here.
Yeah, it's pretty, I think so. I just wanted to make sure. With the FY twenty-four, his new pay will be twenty-sixty-seven per hour and he will be full-time effective seven twenty-three, twenty-three.
I'll move Todd Turner be promoted from a part-time firefighter EMT two to a part-time firefighter EMT three position. Initial rate at nineteen dollars, sixty-eight cents per hour, effective six eleven, twenty twenty-three. And then be transferred from part-time firefighter EMT three to full-time firefighter EMT three at the fiscal year salary increase rate of twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents per hour, effective July twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion case three-one.
Like real quick, do we have account numbers where we are?
Oh, with the list, got with Cindy the other day, we're still, well, it depends on the budgeting for a few positions that we were discussing and then.
Do we know how many we have, still have?
Five, I think.
Five.
All right.
The last personnel is Melissa Goodwin. She moved from a, she was part-time from firefighter EMT one to firefighter EMT two at a new rate of nineteen twenty, was effective five twenty-five. She's gonna, she gets the FY twenty-four, which will increase her pay to twenty sixteen per hour and she's going to go full-time effective, there is an adjustment to, what was the request, seven thirty, twenty-three, so.
Instead of seven-one.
Yeah, there was a conflict worked out, so.
Move that Melissa Goodwin be promoted from a part-time firefighter EMT one to a part-time firefighter EM two, position at initial rate of nineteen dollars and twenty cents per hour, effective May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And then also transferred from part-time firefighter EMT two to full-time firefighter EMT two with the new fiscal year increase to twenty dollars and sixteen cents. That will be effective July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries four-zero.
It's really great to see these positions being built.
Yeah, I was.
Your certification and vacant positions.
Yeah, it's been great that these guys, several of them, Donnie being here the longest, he's seventeen years, I think. And then the other guys, a lot of them, a couple of them are new, but the other have been here several years, so it's nice to be able to grow our own, so we know what we have to start with, but yeah, we're filling those slots. So I have one last item we need to discuss, the EMS standbys we talked about briefly earlier in the year. If we were going to do them, how are we going to handle, was there going to be fees billing? I have requests from Jefferson County Schools for football, Washington and Jefferson. Initially, I thought, I spoke to Midway, to Chief Mood and he was under the impression that they could take their first responder vehicle, one person, and do the standbys as they've done in the past. Schools saying they'd really like to have an ambulance on site. So currently, we haven't been able to proceed with the Shepherdstown purchase, so the volunteers can't utilize that one. Midway sold there before we could finalize that deal. So most of the time to do these standbys, it encourages overtime. So generally, rough estimate is like a hundred dollars an hour, what it costs us for personnel with their overtime rate and benefits. And then Mr. Wilt from the fair reached out with a schedule of things, days and times they'd like to staff first aid booth for this event. I think we can rely a lot on Shepherdstown and Midway, especially for the first aid booth. The only times that they would have to have us currently would be when they need an ambulance on site with a crew. So we can work, work that out between the three, three companies and see what, how much commitment is going to be needed from us, but really need to know if we're going to charge these people and how much and what stipulations. Because everyone's asking, so.
I have a couple of issues with this request. I think back when there was discussion over changing the ordinance, we came to terms with the fact to realize some of the schools weren't paying ambulance fee. And there was discussion around exempting them. I know we didn't pass that, but I think it's bold to request standby units with staffed units when we have communities that have, that pay and residents that pay fees in those communities that have no representation or no ambulance there. I'd like to see a plan for this, but it's not something that I can entertain. I think some of these organizations could hire private service to run their services instead of relying on the strapped county. We're already understaffed where we can't supply for the entire county. And now rather we're charging them for it or not, it's still a matter of coverage and the rest of the county relying on mutual aid. I just don't, I'm not, this doesn't make me feel good, particularly for the communities that have no, no.
I can go any direction with it, I just need to.
I know.
Know what your feelings, yeah. I understand that, I mean, those are definitely valid points.
I think, obviously, we have two, two, it's two staffed units that citizens and two independent right now. If you, if, if you pull one of those out and send them to a game or fair or whatever and there's still a standby, an extra unit stood back at the station, I can understand that if they, and then if we need, that one needs to be called back in town, I don't, how do I say this? If they're just out there, if they're dedicated, dedicated, need to stay there, there's probably should be a fee. But if, if they're just out there but still on call, is that what I'm looking for?
Yeah, the fair I know for sure has at least one event, that's the bull riding that mandates that there's two units there the entire time and they can't be committed to anything else.
Yeah.
Yes, schools I think in the past have, they've gotten by with first responder vehicle with a single provider. It's just, you know, what they were hoping for, I guess, is my understanding. And like I said, that, I just got this list from, from Todd Wilt, so I haven't even spoke to Chief Demeritor, Chief Mood about working out what days who could do what. So I think there's a lot that can be handled by the volunteers there, but I just need to know what to tell these people, whether it's a no or we're still considering how to do this or, so that they can, they can move forward with other plans.
I mean, it would be.
It's really been a.
Plan on how this, I mean, I've already voiced my concerns and I know you're just taking direction from us, but I don't think there's really any real plan in front of us for how to handle the request and what it'll look like for the rest of the county.
I do think, you know, they're wanting an ambulance there with, what, two people?
Yeah, it takes two people, so it's.
I think we're going to have to charge them. I mean.
I mean, it occurs overtime, ninety percent of the time to staff that.
By community service, but that also involves every citizen in county too, that we want to.
I mean, we could utilize reserve units if they're available. reserve units if they're available, not always, because we have units in the shop frequently, but.
Well, can you come back and maybe if you have your dates or what the
Yeah, I can.
Are and see, I mean, I know this is a lot of radiation with the volunteers and seeing what they may have or
Yeah, it shouldn't be a problem to look it up for the, for the fair and then.
You know, and then just tell them, you know, if we have to, if your requirements are an ambulance staffed, you're gonna have to charge it. I mean, and I don't know what a reasonable rate is. I mean, or is there, are there professional?
There's, we lost Ryan Neal.
Yeah.
So that was a big dent, everything. That was, they were the ones that were handling a lot of the fair stuff, except for the special events and then there's really, there's two connected to the two hospitals and one other one out of Martinsburg, so I'm not sure how much they'd really do, but yeah, their, the problem is their options have gotten limited on their end and we're, you know, we're short on our end.
Well, can you maybe explore what they would charge? So I mean, we would have a ballpark for you. I don't know what's reasonable and what's not.
Yeah.
We could request that, you know, that we just charge them staff time, so whatever that rate is. It wouldn't cost that much else than like maintenance for the vehicle.
You're right, yeah. If we have the staff and the ambulances available, yeah.
And, and I would, would, would we wanna charge for only a dedicated unit? I mean, I'll throw a scenario out there, you take the Harps Ferry unit that's there and if they're not called out and they go to the football game at the junior high or middle school, sorry. And, but they're not dedicated to that, to that day, where we charge them for non, a non-dedicated unit, I don't know. Obviously, there's an event at the fair that they need a dedicated unit at one night, I think, so.
And I don't, I don't know the logistics of what's.
Sure.
If the unit is at a game on standby, they're, they're committed to stay there, correct?
Depends on the stipulations of the event.
Depends on the
Some events require the unit to be there the entire, some just are asking, you know, they need someone, but they prefer an ambulance and
Well, everybody does.
Yeah, right, so.
I think we need to find this, you need to find this stuff.
I do echo the concern that Commissioner Jackson has with respect to people in, in Middleway and on the mountain without having that dedicated ambulance. I do understand their concerns in that area with the ambulance being taken in case of emergency. I did want to just say that. Thank you.
So I guess the consensus is just to come back with how, how we would do that at their next meeting and then present it and we'll figure it out.
Try to figure it out.
Yeah.
And I hate to throw Shepherd into the mix because they are also their own entity, but that's quickly approaching too and that was part of the plan with incorporating that Shepherdstown purchase, they could continue to use that unit for that and back us up, so.
Maybe we'll have that deal done by the next meeting, maybe.
We're, we're waiting on the insurance for MOU and MOU's ninety nine percent done, we're waiting on the insurance company to come back with a small section, so. Volunteers agreed to it, just waiting on it.
I think we have an agreement pending the insurance.
I think that we've solved a lot, I have answered a lot of our questions once this is done.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big move forward. It's a big step we need to get done, so.
I hope funding for that is good, Mike, I was able to review that, so.
Yeah, okay, that's good, because that's what's kind of our holdups currently, we were just getting a good grasp on the ARPA, so.
All right.
I think that's it, so I'll bring that back next meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to take a two minute break and then we'll come back with agenda number nine, Nathan Cochrane.
Or maybe do number ten, somebody who's been waiting.
Oh, yes, yes, we'll come back and do number ten first. Sorry, but we'll do you before we do Nate. Yes, sorry.
All right, welcome back after brief recess there. We're gonna move to agenda item number ten, then we're gonna move back to nine. So discussion of Region Nine Board Vacancy.
Can we, can Rachel, basically, so I am asking the station on the line. Dennis Jarvis, that on the Region Board. We've got a Rachel on there. So he sat on the Region Nine Board and he was appointed by you. There was a request that he be removed from Region Nine and that you make an appointment for a new representative. And looking over their bylaws, and this is, this is, this is Region Nine, so I just brought their bylaws along. It looks like we have a total from Jefferson County of seven members. On, and I think that, I don't know exactly who that is, but one of them was Dennis and apparently traditionally it's the Development Authority Executive Director.
Yes, it's always, it's always, it is in the past, been the Development Authority Director that's on that board, which only makes sense. So would, would we just be replacing, would be a replacement or a
I think we need to remove Mr. Jarvis and point of replacement.
Yeah, and it says on here to finish the term, through June thirtieth, twenty four.
All right, I'll move, I'll move a motion to remove Dennis Jarvis, Dennis Jarvis from the Region Nine Board. All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, I will move a motion to have our EDA, Economic Development Director serve on the remaining term of that board and, and the replacement of Mr. Jarvis.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Sorry to sit you there all day.
Great. All right, now we're gonna move back to the Nathan Cochrane Hour.
Commissioner, under my item number nine, I would just update you regarding point C, which would be discussion of a couple of Circuit Court cases, I would advise the commission that we are continuing to respond to those cases and I will give you a more complete report at the next meeting because we have responded to one, are responding to the second one and since they're similar, there's no point in going over it. So I'll tell you more about it next time. Beyond that, the only one that I need to deal with is my nine B regarding solar text issues and some of the cases related to that. And we have our counsel who we have utilized on these solar cases, who's going to appear and give you a presentation and also offer you some legal advice. For that reason, I would recommend that you enter into executive session.
All right, just for the record, I will not be participating in this discussion. We're only going into executive session under nine B that involves solar, so I will be staying out in the hallway, but I'll move a motion for, for the rest of everybody to go to the executive session to receive legal advice on nine B.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries four zero. All right. All right. The four. All right, welcome back. Move that we come out executive session, executive session?
Back in.
Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
She's still on there.
Yep, she's on here.
Okay.
Is there any motions coming out of executive session? Nope. All right. We'll move on to county administrator report. It's all yours.
Right.
I know when I stand out in the hallway, Jeff asked if he could go first since he's here.
Oh, hello Jeff. Don't worry. Ignore my text message. Yeah, that's fine. I'm going to give you Commissioner Kraus though because she's on myself.
Hello, Commissioner Kraus.
Hey, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Do I need to?
You talk, I'll find it for you.
So, this is part of the administrators' reports. I think it's the item titled Background Investigation. Private investigator. So at your last meeting, the county administrator presented you with documentation for the Communication Center to contract with a West Virginia certified private investigator to perform background investigations that are required of public safety dispatch employment. In Jefferson County, we must hire qualified candidates to serve the roles dealing with safety of our public. And I suggest that you would want us to hire the most qualified individuals in our communication center. To ensure that to ensure that we reach this objective, we retained a contracted background investigator for the past two decades. Since 2001, the Communication Center has contracted services to investigate candidates that fill the roles of public safety dispatcher, supervising public safety dispatcher, and any positions that have access to confidential and sensitive information. In the comm center, public safety staff have access to sensitive calls for service, confidential law enforcement records, criminal history, accesses to databases with personal identifying information, all in the performance of their day-to-day activities. Public safety staff are highly trained individuals, certified in criminal justice information systems, and are guardians of sensitive information for the purposes of law enforcement and officer safety. Performing a background checks are opportunity to verify information provided by our candidates. We seek revelation of personal data, military history, references, financial data, residence, data, education, employment history, driver history, arrests, convictions, past drug use, organizational affiliations, and volunteer work. Candidates wishing to work at Communication Center provide a signed, notarized, authorized release of personal information. The information on these investigations help reveal information admitted in the application documents either mistakenly or intentionally. Could reveal residency in other regions where criminal history may be located, could expose past job performance and productivity issues that we may deem too great of risk, could reveal domestic psychological, criminal, and financial issues when evaluating candidates. Offers, when evaluating a candidate, offers the county with information to suggest continuing employment process would pose too great a liability. Generally, an employer that fails to investigate backgrounds of applicants whom they hire for risk-sensitive positions may be allowable for negligent hiring or retention if the employee is later involved in serious misconduct or illegal activities. Punitive damages for those cases can run into millions of dollars. Consequently, the time and money we might save by not doing backgrounds such as this are a drop in the bucket compared to what you might be required to spend to defend yourself against a negligent hiring lawsuit. In the end, the investigator provides the county with a report recommendation for employment, provides the knowledge that the individual we're suggesting to employ is a qualified candidate successfully completing all phases of our pre-employment process. Unfortunately, our most recent background investigator is no longer available to the county, and in needing these services, I've reached out to investigators that we've used in the past with no fruition. The investigator that we are contracting with has offered his services, and we've negotiated a reasonable contract. The ECC does not have the proper resources on staff, nor can the prosecuting attorney or sheriff's office perform in-depth backgrounds due to other parties in their departments, such as prosecutions or law enforcement. I have consulted with both the departments prior to this meeting. With all this being said, presented for your signature is a contract between the county commission and Mr. Nye Fallata, Army veteran, former West Virginia State Trooper, former officer at the Shepherd University Police Department. Mr. Alata is a certified private investigator in the state of West Virginia, is the principal of Prestige Investigations. In addition to his job, he's also enrolled at Liberty University, seeking his master's degree in cybersecurity. If you have questions regarding our background process, I will be happy to answer them. Any questions?
Yes, I do. So you said we use a previous background investigator for two decades. Who did we use? And when did that contract in?
Contracts, the, the, the most recent background investigator is no longer with us. The past background investigators that we have used are Mr. Zach Vaughn, Mr., I'll name is escaping me, Eddie Pa. And we have used them on, on differing time periods. And then the most recent is no longer with us now. So sensitive to that. But we have used a background investigator since 2001.
I guess I'm trying to find out of these few that you've named, when was the last time any of them were used?
I would say Zach was in 2015, maybe, 2014. Our last background investigator has, is now deceased. And when that happened, we lost a, the ability, and I've been searching for a background investigator. When that event occurred, it left a void. And I did reach out to both Mr. Pa and Mr. Vaughn. And it just never came to fruition. I, I could suggest that if you want to have three background investigators on staff, that we divvy out background investigations, but that's not happened.
I'm just trying to determine a timeline. We, we haven't had someone doing it for the duration for which someone hasn't been doing this in depth, what I think is intrusive for some of this investigation, DMV records for 10 years and all of that. I'm just trying to determine the lapse of having an investigator and the need to have someone do this in-depth of investigation, interviewing and, and all of that for dispatchers. I understand the sensitivity of the information that they handle. But I'm trying to justify the need for one now. And then have there been any violations or concerns, or has anything occurred that has exposed us since the last one used, lapsed to now?
So I'll answer that last question. There has not been any exposure as of yet. I do have a candidate that does need to have a background investigation done that came on board after the, we lost our background investigator. And so I do need to get those performed. We have done background investigations on every employee that we have ever brought on board. We have had instances where we have released candidates from the employment process due to information that is surfaces from the background investigation, and it's a very, very, very valuable tool. It is one of the tools in the toolbox that we use to, to evaluate our candidates and to make sure that we are limiting our liability. That's the whole reason for this. You're limiting your liability.
I'm, and so the reason we can't use local agencies, sheriff's department, state police, is they don't have the staff to do basically what it looks like a top security clearance for.
I've held a top secret security clearance. This is not a top secret security clearance.
Well, I just think interviewing relatives. I understand references of previous jobs and all of that, verifying education, those sorts of things, interviewing relatives. And I'm failing to understand the need to pull financial records of dispatchers.
So I, I think that there could be a multitude of reasons to pull different pieces of information and different pieces of data on a candidate. Was trying to think of different scenarios. Somebody, an organized, organized crime type of person that's affiliated could apply, and we would never know that that person would be affiliated. They're coming in to the organization that has the access to calls for service, how we do our job, the specifics and the protocols. Think about somebody that might be organized with a ring that performs bank robberies, right? You get somebody on the inside that we're not investigating, and they delay the call for service. There, there are multitude of reasons why we investigate and research people's backgrounds.
Can you tell me if this details in this contract, which do seem to be very detailed, are equivalent to what you have done before?
They are. Absolutely. And, and of course, you have a motion here, a recommended motion, of course, not to exceed a certain dollar amount. What's the average, like, what do you think the average cost is per background reference? About $500. So it's about a eight to 10 hour process, I think, including development. So, and, and having that comprehensive report is ensuring that we're looking at all the information. We're looking at this candidate in an angle to make sure that this candidate is somebody that we want to be under the headset, that's going to be safe for our other employees, that's going to be manageable, that's not going to have problems that have already surfaced at a, a past employer, two past employers, not be doing drugs in a house that the neighbor sees that, you know, they're dealing out of. So, yeah, there's all kinds of reasons why we need background investigation on our candidates.
We do. If I can interrupt, I hope that you can hear me okay.
I can.
Okay, it's a little hard for me to hear the others in the room, but I'm trying to, you know, guess what their questions were based on your answers. So I do hope I'm not being redundant. The, so, so Commissioner Jackson may have asked this in the beginning, I could hear her a little bit. But my question was, in the time that you have not had, there was, I guess, a gentleman deceased now who previously did your background investigations. In, in the time that you haven't had his services, what, what have you been doing? Have you had help from any of the other agencies in the county or state?
I've done, we always, I always do a preliminary check before I'm bringing candidates into the, before the county commission. I have not had anybody available to me until, and I have been seeking assistance in performing background investigations from contracted individuals. And I have reached out to both Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Pa on this. And again, it just never came to fruition. It finally came to fruition when Mr. Alata and I started sitting down, talking about this and working through the negotiations of this. So I do have a candidate that is currently working in the center. I have done some research on this candidate. This is a rather younger individual that didn't have a lot of history. And so I was comfortable in discussing her past employment with her, I think, one employer at the time and how she was working. But again, I mean, this is going to be something that I'm going to be completing on that candidate. The remainder of the candidates, obviously, we have to do background investigation.
I'm not, I'm not clear. Did you say that you have been doing checks in the, in the time that you have not had a designated, designated employee for this purpose?
It's been, it's been minor checks, and, but I don't have any type of report that's developed that would be considered a full background investigation report.
The, the, the fine people that I met when I visited the 911 center, have they had this kind of comprehensive check done on their background? The kind that you are referring to, I guess, not just a preliminary check?
So I'm not recalling exactly who you talked to when you were at the center. I think there were varying levels of employment experience there at that time. So, but there are, you know, the newer individuals that we have brought on board. So the individuals that just came out of the academy, we need to perform backgrounds on them. And that's where, you know, we stand right now.
Okay. I guess my question was that, and I think you're correct about that. I think there were obviously some that were newer than others when I did visit. But my, my question mainly is, have the, have the people, I guess, who you would not consider newer employees, have those people had the, this comprehensive check done on their history that you're, that, that you're aware of?
Yes, every employee that we have brought on board since 2001 has, except, with the exception of those individuals recently, have had comprehensive backgrounds. And those that don't, that we haven't done the comprehensive background on, we will initiate.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what, just one more question, please. And again, I apologize if I'm being redundant. The, the, how can I phrase this? The, the, I'm sorry. I have, I have lost my train of thought. I have a little list of questions here, and I'm afraid I'm being redundant. The, the question of, you have been able to get these, these preliminary checks done on these individuals that you have, have recently hired, I think, is that, is that what I've heard? They're the ones that, that are waiting for this more comprehensive check. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm just, it's, it's a little difficult being on this end, and I do apologize for not being able to be here in person.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, certainly, having a comprehensive background check is, is, I feel is very mission critical and something we need to do for all of our employees, even when we hire, make recommendations for hiring. Rather, rather being our financial director, administrative, or in our administrator, whoever it is, we always do a, have a background check. Do a comprehensive search. I do believe this is mission critical, especially, you know, in that some scenarios that gave us today. The, the money that we spend per person that seems slow, or feels reasonable, I should say, just seems reasonable. And I know the motions here to go up to 30,000, obviously, you, this could exceed, that could last a long time. It could last a very long. That could last three, four years. That's right. Easily. So with the little, little amount of money that it does cost, I don't have a problem with this, because it certainly does seem like it's mission critical. I'd like to go ahead and just push the motion out there, see if we get the support forward to approve a contract with Jefferson County and Mr. Alata. He's a West Virginia private investigator for the purpose of providing pre-employment background checks for public safety dispatchers, not to exceed $30,000.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I do have a little bit of discussion. I'm looking at the compensation rates, the attached, the attachment that I have in our agenda. And it, it does seem to be, I'm, I'm a little concerned about the ability. I mean, I mean, does this happen often that somebody has to travel out of state and buy airplane tickets and hotel rooms and rental cars? Is that something that happens often?
Does not happen often. Most of our candidates are getting, are, are local. However, we just have a recent dispatcher that came to us from Myrtle Beach area, Ori County. Prior to that, we had somebody come into our communication center from a county in Alabama. And so necessity may be there. It's not typical, because it's more local. We did, did negotiate the mileage out so that covers the Baltimore, Washington DC area here, and that's typically And that's typically where we're getting our candidates from.
There's a clause to Jeff in the contract that states that anything out of that 75-mile radius requires your approval.
Yes, it does. So, you know, it's, I think it's very reasonable that if we're asking the background investigator to investigate our candidates, that we're compensating fairly and appropriately and reasonably. I think we did, well, we did negotiate the, the fact that anything above a certain amount of hours, we're going to understand and evaluate for continuance. Or if we have enough information that we feel that is going to give us the ability to make a decision whether we're going to continue or we're going to release. So those clauses are in this contract that give us the ability to say, yes, let's go, and let's do it or not.
I would feel a little more comfortable if the amount were not so high, such as the 30,000. That, I understand that could last for a long time, but it, it also seems like it could add up quickly if we're looking at places, or looking at potential employees that are, that are a distance away with this. It says here, standard unrestricted code airfare for destinations served by commercial airlines are for 300 miles each way. And it just, I'm, I'm just concerned about that. I think the 30,000 is what's concerning me.
So I think, well, the 30,000 is in this contract to put a number on a contract that says not to exceed. I strongly believe that if, you know, we look at the last 10 years of our contracts with the investigators, we have not come anywhere near that number at all. So, you know, most of our, most of our employees that we have performed and completed background investigations on have been local.
And did I hear you correctly when you said that each investigation typically costs about $500, is that correct?
Yeah, it's about a 10-hour, eight to 10-hour investigation, I think, is the average. Could be, it could be a longer, based on information that's developed, that needs to be researched further, or could be shorter. So it's, the contract is an hourly contract.
Okay, and so this, this process, this, this billing, this comes to you, correct? And so not the, not the commission. I guess what we would be approving would be the particular contract. So you would be the one speaking with Mr. Alata regarding the various, you know, searches, background checks? And, and he, you would be working with him if there was something that would have to be an out-of-towner or something like that? That would be, that would be you, correct?
Yeah, certainly, you know, one thing that's important to understand here is this is budgeted every year. This is budgeted from 911 fees that are collected and only able to be used for the purposes of 911 dispatch. So the 911 fees cover this, it's not coming from general fund revenue.
I didn't see that in my packet, I appreciate you letting me know that. Okay, so that, okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate that, Jeff.
You're welcome.
If you can hear me, I'll speak up. I just wanted to let you know too that this past year, those funds have been budgeted in Jeff's budget in the past. And his revenues this year just about covered all of his expenditures. So they did a really great job at keeping their budget in check.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, any other discussion?
Well, I'm just going to say, I do think this is critical, that, you know, professional background checks are done on our E91 dispatchers. I mean, people are usually at their most vulnerable or in a crisis situation. And I just think it's important that we have folks that are, you know, can keep everything confidential. And sometimes that's really hard, because a job like that, you get a lot of pressure and you feel like you've got to let it out sometimes. But, you know, it's very important to keep it confidential, so we need reliable folks that don't have, you know, any situations they haven't been able to deal with in the past. I think this is a reasonable contract. The director of E911 will be the gatekeeper in cases, so I'm sure he'll know. If he has a situation that he feels like he doesn't need more than any one of us, it can be discussed. But, yeah, I really think it's important to protect our citizens from the E911 system and our employees too.
I have one more question before. So I noticed his, that the gentleman's private investigative license were just issued on May 12th, 23. Did he do this work previously, or is he brand new to private investigating?
He is new to the private investigator field.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
No?
No.
Motion carries three, one, thank you. So you have about 10 more things which you want to tackle?
I can be quick.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'll use your pen.
All right, I'll start with internal budget transfers, that's, that's one of the easiest ones. So we just have three internal transfers for maintenance, IT, and circuit court. And we had a discussion about, you know, the P cards are going to hit late, so a couple of them have hit late. And these are budget-neutral transfers, they're just being transferred from other line items in their department into the materials and supplies. So I would just ask for a motion to approve those.
I'll move a motion to approve all the internal budget transfers that was just discussed.
And I'll second, and that's three internal budget transfers for Department 424, 428, and 403.
Yes, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero. I think I got everybody, right? Okay? Sorry, all right?
Okay, next. So there have been some challenges we've been facing with maintaining the finance. You know, we have a little bit understaffed, we have new staff, we just lost another staff member in the, in the finance department. So we're kind of working hard to just keep everything flowing effectively and smoothly. Emma is our ambulance fee collector, she, she's a one-man team for the most part. I believe in the past that the previous CFO had done a lot of the data entry and billing for her because the MUNIS system was so new. We are learning it, you know, we have funds and we have people coming in to train us on this. But for right now, we could really use some help in getting these accurately put together and recorded and printed. So we reached out to a firm that works with the county on several other mailings for taxes and such. And they came back with a quote to help us print out the invoices for, for this year. So we would ask for a motion to approve that.
So do, do we use them before, or who, how, how have they been printed in previous years?
So different.
Yeah.
But we do it outside.
Print for printing? So they are not folding, stuffing, and all of that stuff? Is it coming in? They're doing?
They have done that previously, yeah. And they, and I do believe they did come in at a slightly lower rate, because we work with them on some other things as well.
I guess I am trying to wrap my head around, I mean, we have a full-time ambulance billing collection or billing person, Emma. Full-time is your, what, 40 hours or 35 hours? And then we do have, you know, administrative staff at the commission. I'm just trying to wrap my head around outsourcing this and why we would not do this in-house, particularly with a full-time person. I mean, people aren't, I mean, every day to pay their ambulance fee. There, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around that.
And that is age of the five-year inquiry. So I would say, you know, anyway, you know, I came on board, right? We didn't have a CFO, so we have a budget director now, she's doing great. There are still things that I'm handling, though, just because a lot of, you know, when, I believe it was Michelle who brought the Tyler MUNIS product to the county. It's a great product, I really love using it. It can be very effective, but what we lack is some of the ability to just kind of overcome the obstacles of the knowledge gaps that weren't shared with staff previously. We've had a lot of lack of communication, lack of cross-training. And so onboard with all of our new folks, we're working really hard together to get that cross-training so that we don't have to continue to ask for items like this. But right now, with the end of the fiscal year '23, the rollover of the new budget, all of the new staff, this would just really help take away a simple task so that we could focus on higher-level things in the moment. You know, next year, I'm hoping we'll have some great cross-training initiatives. And, well, I guess next quarter, we would have some great cross-training initiatives, and staff would be comfortable in all of our new roles so that we can do this without assistance. But we would request it, it would help with that.
Well, you know, you say it's just envelope stuffing, but you've got to get the right address and all that stuff. You've got to do it right, and it's not, it's not fun, it's tedious.
There have been some difficulties too. The Tyler MUNIS system is very finicky in the way that you upload things. And I'll just give you an example. So normally, what happens with our purchase card statements is that we get those statements from the bank in a form of an Excel spreadsheet. That Excel spreadsheet then can be uploaded into our finance software to hit our budget items. However, there were difficulties in transitioning that Excel because it wasn't reflecting the data fields that MUNIS required to correspond with it. So as a senior-level leader in the county, I spent several days trying to help our finance team figure that out, which took my time away from doing more higher-level things. And that's the problem that we're running into right now, without having the training, which we are getting. I just wanted to make you aware that there could have been a better usage for my time as an exam.
I, I agree with all that, I'm just trying to figure out, and I know it's a lot of work. I know it comes the first of July and all of that, but what's Emma doing for a full-time job? We're not doing ambulance billing or collection every day, and that's what she's designated to do. How are the gaps being filled? That's what I'm questioning. I just want to make sure we're not outsourcing stuff that we have staff onboard to, that can do that.
And that is part of my plan. You know, we've had a lot of whirlwind going on. I have not had a chance to sit down with every single staff person to kind of review, you know, to do a department review. However, that is on my list. For example, I've asked our internal staff at the commission's office to start preparing SOPs so that we can review, you know, what our duties currently are and how we can make processes more effective. And I will continue to do that as more and more of the finance stuff gets taken off my plate and taken over by the budget director. And so that's certainly something that I do plan to do. I know Emma works really hard, she, she works a lot too with, you know, the ESA, and she's been helping Mike and us with the ESA transition as well. So we have been able to utilize her in a more, more than just billing.
And she also has to keep up with every new house, every new address, all that. It's, and corrections, because I had to go in for our farm property, make a correction. Said there was a house there, there wasn't, but there was a house on another parcel, so there's going to be corrections.
Do we not pull that the houses or the units or the class to know what to bill them by from the tax partner?
So when we get the data, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, when we get the data from the assessors, it doesn't, it does not pull, it doesn't match the parcel number correctly with the rest of the information. So it takes several hours for Emma to go through all of those and to put them in a way that can be taken by either, in the future, us into Tyler MUNIS, or taken by the printing company and processed. So she is doing a lot of that groundwork. The only thing that the printing people are doing for us is stuffing and printing the information.
So just a couple, a couple more questions.
Sure.
So how did we arrive at, or do we know 10,000 pieces for, I guess, is that delinquent? What's the 10,000 pieces?
Is that an accurate number of what we have, right?
That's delinquent, and then there's 8,000, right? Originally, to set up, yeah.
So the way our, the way our ordinance reads, we send out the two delinquents each year, so that would be?
So I guess I would be comfortable with the 25,000 piece now, and then come back if you know how many delinquents we have or that we need, instead of just?
And we may have the MUNIS issues solved by then as well.
Right. So the initial mailing, I think I'd be more comfortable with 65, instead of the 11,000 for both delinquent mailing. Till we actually know what those are. That, that's, or you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, go right here, that's fine. Do you want to?
Did I, please forgive me if I'm interrupting, I'm not, I'm not hearing everybody very clearly.
I'm sorry, I didn't pass you around.
I do apologize again. Did I hear Commissioner Jackson ask about this first mailing of the 25,000-piece mailing? And then, of course, there were two subsequent mailings, correct?
She did, so the 25,000-piece mailing is the one that she was going for. So we send out two, you know, because we, we never changed the ordinance to just go to one late fee, we do two late fees. So that, that would, that costs us more money to do it twice a year instead of once. And then what Commissioner Jackson was saying is that we could potentially approve the 25,000 piece, which is the 6,500, and then revisit if needed, because we may have the knowledge available to us at that point in time to do it ourselves with ease.
Okay, thank you, I think that that sounds like a very good compromise.
Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve progressive printing to print and prepare the ambulance fee invoices for mailing for $6,516.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero.
All right, next item, I'm going to go with the lease renewal for the Department of Health and Human Services. Pretty standard, they did not change anything in their lease, they just wanted to renew it as it's up in August. So I would ask for the renewal of the lease agreement with the Department of Health and Human Services, who resides in our bargaining building.
I'll move to approve the lease agreement with the HHR.
I'll second and just outline the terms, it's a three-year lease renewal for $18,707 per year.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No? Motion carries four, zero.
I'm going to skip down to the ESA transition. I don't have any documentation on that, because it's just a verbal update. So we wanted to have a role, new payroll transition up and running by July 1st. We thought we had a really great idea, but when talking with the CPA firm, there were just some issues with filing at the end of the year on our financial statements. So we're going to push that back to August 1st. So it's not too bad, and all of the employees are receiving paychecks under the county of Jefferson right now. We just have, we're just continuing with Kerry's whip services until we get all of the information we need from our CPA firm. So, but that is going to be, and then all the licenses are up to date, and they are in the process of being sent to us, so that's positive. And then just with the state, the West Virginia Emergency Services Organization, they are coming in August to do their audit. But they don't foresee any issues, so that renewal license will come shortly thereafter. Mike, does that sound about right to you? Anybody have any questions at the moment on those things? Closeout of the 2023, 2024, 2022, 2025. We are working, the new budget director and I are working with the county clerk's team to start the year-end reports. Those are going smoothly. to start the year-end reports. Those are going smoothly, and we anticipate meeting the state's deadline of July 31st. The fiscal year 2324, I have all of the revenue expenditures entered into the budget. We'll be releasing that as active by the end of the day today, so we'll get that up and rolling. And I've been working closely with my former employer, who have a lot of specialists in the Tyler Munis. So I'm just going to thank them for their free services. So that is going well.
So just a quick question on that with the, the budget. Because I know we, at least the commission had approved for CPA firm to audit the budget before it was entered into the one we just submitted. So did we get a blessing from them or where are we?
Yes. The only thing they wanted us to change, which will be a revision to the state, when they did the budget review, we didn't have ESA reporting to us. So I'm working with Charlie. She's our, she's our representative there, and we are going to be submitting that as one of our final revisions. But so far, she has blessed what we've submitted to her. I'm going to go into the creation of Fund 61 and Fund 62. This was Senate Bill 522, so it's just a formality I'm bringing to your attention. We created two new, two new funds, which is County Clerk Election Administration and County Clerk Real Property E. Recording Act. With your blessing, add those into our budget.
And we got that from the auditor's office, correct?
Yes.
In creating, okay.
We're creating two, two special funds. Okay.
We need a motion for that.
Yes.
All right, I'll, I'll move, move a motion to create these funds as presented.
I'll second, just outline it's Fund 61, County Clerk Election Administration, and Fund 62, County Clerk Real Property E. Recording Act.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
So then I'm going to go into the, I have on the agenda the commissioner's meeting room policy discussion. We had some discrepancies in how the procedure should go recently. And I just wanted to seek permission to present the commission with a draft for the next commissioner's meeting on some recommendations for changes that might make the process a little smoother and a little less convoluted for people trying to rent through a mail.
Nice. I think too, we need to safeguard our equipment that we just invested in.
That is true. We don't have any clause for breaking.
And I don't want folks to think they can come in and operate. Put a big cover.
I don't think I need a motion for that, but I just wanted to make.
That would be good. Yeah.
Great. My last item is discussion on the potential representative appointment of a county commissioner or county administrator to attend the Region 2 West Virginia First Foundation meeting, which is being held by Berkeley County. So long story short, the state of West Virginia, through the AG's office, they engaged in litigation against opioid issues. And, you know, the counties are being broken up into different regions. We're giving money, and each region is going to have some appointees on their board. So Berkeley County, being the county of choice to represent the Region 2, is holding a meeting on July 12 at 1:00 PM. I spoke to their prosecuting attorney last week, and there needs to be a representative from the commission's office, and that can be one of you, or that can be myself, to represent Jefferson's interest in the decision on who's going to represent Region 9 to the opioid boards.
I, I don't have, I mean, unless a commissioner wants to, to attend this, I, I don't have a problem with you attending that and representing the county.
I mean, I would say I have some experience in this. If you would like me to represent the commission, I've worked for nonprofit agencies that do human services specifically on mental health and in recovery. I do a lot of that kind of charity work on the side. So it would be my honor to represent the commission if you'd like. But if not, you'll just have to choose between that three or four.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with you going. I also know the governor is planning to appoint seats to.
He will, yes.
That'll be outside of, I believe, this governing body. So if the, the governing body, it would be nice. I know it's been offered or mentioned that the county liaison, at least to, for this body to maybe submit some people to the governor for consideration. That's not county commission staff.
Yeah, I think we can submit support letters to their office, so. But I think, I think it's a six-person governor appointee and then five-person representative.
Any motion for you to, or just a general consensus?
For that, and I think it's on the.
I'll move to appoint our county administrator to represent Jefferson County at Region 9 West Virginia First Foundation meeting hosted by Berkeley County on July 12th.
Second.
Just amendment, it's, it's Region 2 for this.
Okay, what is Region 9?
I did have it, yes. I was still on Eddie's presentation earlier with your Region 9.
All right, it just kind of comes off the top.
No, I said it wrong. It's.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. All right, that's it?
Nothing else.
Nothing else. All right, is there anything else? Any other business that needs to come before the commission today? Hearing none, if there are no objections, objections, we are adjourned.